Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 16th, regular meeting of the school committee. We have just returned from an executive session where we met to comply with an act under the authority of mass general law specific to the conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-unit personnel, the administrative team, because having the discussion in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position, and we are now reconvening in open session. And I would ask those who are here who would like to join us in the pledge of allegiance to please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, this is great to have so many people here in the audience. We have a number of recognitions. If we want to start with recognitions and then we can double back to public comment after.
We surely do.
So, I'm actually going to ask our Marathon Elementary School principal, Lauren Dubois, to come up. We have some folks from Lauren's building here tonight. We have students, we have some of the seniors from the Senior Center, and we have a very special retiree who has had a very special program going on for a long time, and we want to recognize that tonight. Mr. B., I'm going to have you over here, okay? Izzy will stand, okay? So I'm going to let these ladies sit. All right, you can get right in there, and then ladies, you can sit. Sure, you have a seat. You may sit. No, I'm flexible. We can stand. So, we have a very special honoring tonight. Mr. Mark Bovair is retiring this year after 33 years of teaching.
In Hawkington.
In Hawkington. Now, he has taught almost every elementary grade, which is quite amazing. And also amazing is his first year of teaching, he had Izzy's uncle. His last year of teaching, he has a relative in his class. So, what a way to come full circle. Now, when Mr. B. started teaching, I did a little research, 1986, what happened in that year?
Were you born then?
Lots of things. I was born. I was. Now, Top Gun was a popular movie. They're making a remake right now. Magnum P.I. was popular. There's another show out now. It's a reboot. So, things are coming around again, things that were popular then.
So, short shorts are coming back?
Short shorts, maybe, but what we would like is a gallon of gas. A gallon of gas in 1986, 89 cents. So, that one, we do hope comes back. But, something else that's extra special about Mr. B. is a writing program that he has with the Senior Center. I think it's almost 30 years that he has been having his first graders write. They have code names. Her name is, do you want to say your name?
Hermione.
She'll meet her pen pal later this month. We do a special luncheon. In years past, the class would walk to the Senior Center, be introduced to their pen pals, learn their real names and a little bit about each other. But, what a fabulous connection to have our seniors in town writing to these first graders with their, you know, names over the years. Mr. B. said we had a lot of Star Wars names, and this year, they will be joining us at Marathon for luncheon in a few weeks to meet their pen pals. And I know Mr. B. invited me, my first year in Hawkington, to go to the special luncheon, and I was so thrilled. It was such a wonderful experience that when I left, he let me lead the class, and he said, "Mrs. Dubois, you're headed to Upton. Turn the other way." I started walking back. So, I now know all those backstreets very well. So, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words about your experience from the Senior Center side of the project?
Well, we've been doing it together about eight years. We took it over from a lady, Pat Wade, who did it a number of years. And I've probably been in it 15 years. It's just been a joy, and the elders enjoy getting the letters and can hardly wait to open them, you know? And when they come in the fall, they're hard to read, but by spring and summer, they're really well-written.
It's fun to see the growth that they make.
Yeah. I was, and I had fifth graders when I first started, and of course, we could write the letter. Well, then, when first grade came along, we were writing our letters, and the child said to me, "I can't read cursive." So, that was fun. We've just had some really enjoyable times along the way, especially the pen pal luncheon when we have pizza. And they come with their little songs, and it's just precious.
Everybody looks forward to it. And I think it's been a good thing for this children to learn to write letters and correspond other than through all the technical stuff we have. So, it's a good thing.
Izzy, do you want to say anything about your experience?
I love doing pen pals, and I love drawing beautiful pictures, and I love when I get my note. I can't wait to...
So, just honoring Mr. Bovair for all of his work, because this is above and beyond. He has done this, and he is the teacher at our school. It was Center, now it's Marathon, who continues to write year after year. So, we will be looking for another teacher to fill his shoes. They'll be difficult to fill, but we look for this program to continue. But, the fact that you have done this for almost 30 years, that's remarkable.
It's been the best thing I've done, I feel, connecting the generations in town.
That's good. I had one...
Can we applaud you?
She was a junior in college, just finishing first grade, and she was so tickled. Her mother had walked over with them. And then, a few years later, the mother called me, and she said, "Oh, Anna got Mr. B." She was so excited. "I'll have Anna."
Wonderful. So, thank you for providing this opportunity to recognize him.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Very nice of all of you to do that.
Thank you, Mr. B., for connecting the kids to the community.
It's been easy. Easy and fun. Right, Izzy?
You achieved a wonderful retirement.
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks. Thank you so much all for coming. Okay, and we have a second recognition in our audience tonight. Interestingly, we have brothers. We have Owen and Evan here tonight. I'll just read a little bit about what it is that they have done. They have both won Library of Congress Letters About Literature essays. Evan won the Level One category for fourth to sixth grade, receiving top honors, and he has actually advanced to the Nationals. He'll read his letter at the State House on May 23rd and meet with Representative Dykma and Senator Spilker. They will tell you a little bit about their essays, so I won't steal anyone's thunder. In the Level Two category, grades seven to nine, Owen won honors as one of the top four eighth graders in the state in the entire history of the Library of Congress essay contest approximately 28 years. Owen is the first student to win his state twice and now place in his state three times. So, he's also going to be honored at the State House on the 23rd of May. Owen is a recipient of another writing award. He's third in the nation in the National PTA Reflections Art and Literature Competition. There are 5,000 PTAs in the country that send in a single student essay, and our Hawkington Owen is third. So, that's pretty amazing. So, I would ask you both to come up, please. All right, so I'm going to start with Evan, if that's okay. Evan, the book that he chose to write about was Exclamation Mark. And in his book, he references a teacher who had a profound impact on him, and that is Mrs. Leslie Pryor, who is also here tonight. So, I'm going to ask Mrs. Pryor to join Evan. You thought standing was going to be enough, huh?
No, you have to come up.
Not unlike Mr. Bovair, Mrs. Pryor is also retiring this year, so this is such a lovely honor, I think. And so, Evan, if you could talk a little bit about how Mrs. Pryor inspired your writing.
Well, out of every teacher that I've had, there's always been those moments that are like, "Don't do that. Don't do this. You can't do that." Well, Mrs. Pryor is more like, "You can do that, but think about it." Like...
Could you still be funny?
Probably not.
But with me, could you be funny? I think your humor came out.
So, how long were you in Mrs. Pryor's class before you realized that she was kind of different?
Probably only halfway through the year-ish, probably.
And did you enjoy writing?
Oh, definitely, yeah. It's like art, but with words, I guess.
And that's a great way to put it. So, when did you start writing?
Probably back in like, first grade. No, it was like, Owen won this big essay contest, I remember.
Sixth? You were in, it was like, fourth grade, right?
And like, hey, maybe I can do that. And I did, and well...
It was like, fourth or fifth, right?
Yeah.
But even before that, you were writing.
Yeah. I was running with you in class and stuff, and you helped me became that level of stuff I am now. So, thanks.
You're welcome. He always had it. He had the words, he had the way to put ideas together, and he had injected all kinds of personal touches. I can even remember those writing prompts that we had to do. I still use it. I know. I didn't like them either.
See what you can say when you're going to retire?
I used his as a model because, do you remember? I did! Would you rather be on, would you rather go to a farmhouse or a fire department? The fire department. Do you remember that one?
Oh, yeah!
So cool. And he had...
Which one did you pick, though? This is important.
I'm pretty sure I picked fire department.
He liked bells and the pole and...
Manly gets the pole.
This is true. But, his way of putting things together, and also, what we picked was so apt for him. And I think that gave him, he found his voice. And I think that's great. So, I use it as an example for the other teachers, and I say, "Well, you know, you can do it at age eight." And, yep, so, you know, we kind of put you out there. I don't think I ever told you that.
Right.
So, yes, for sure. So, he's had it. He just had to figure out how to get it on paper and make it really...
Well, I think you figured that out, haven't you?
Yes, he has. Phenomenal.
So, let's hear a little bit from Owen. Is that okay?
It's totally fine.
So, the book that Owen chose to write about was Essie Hinton's That Was Them, This Is Now. So, do you want to talk a little bit about your writing process, or...
Well, yeah, my writing process. Whenever I'm writing an essay or just anything in general, I usually just, well, first I read the book, and then I just, well, my mom calls it throwing up on the paper. I just write anything that comes to my mind. I just, anything. And then I, later, I just edit and see, tries to make what fits, and it sort of just forms on its own. It's like midway through the process, I just get an idea of what I'm doing. It just happens as I'm writing it.
The two of you are amazingly accomplished writers, and I would imagine we'll see more great things.
I mean, this is the third year, I think, you've been here to the school committee that it's become a nice regular thing. I think we'll be looking forward to next year now, too, right?
That's why you look so comfortable. You're just used to this.
I'm not.
We actually keep a scrolling calendar, so we'll just put Owen Fitzpatrick in for next year. Expect to spit back.
Just put a line down.
You are both amazingly talented writers in your own right, but when you look at the fact that you're middle schoolers, that's even bigger. You write better than most adults that I know, and that's a real tribute to where you are right now, but where you're going.
Thank you.
And it is an extreme pleasure to watch that process for you year after year, and to now see your brother here. This is tremendous to have two writers in one family. Your parents must be over the moon proud of you.
Thank you so much.
They should. They write with heart, and that's what I thought was so interesting. It's not just a crafted, you know, formulaic kind of piece.
Right.
They put their heart and soul, and they can put their personality in it. And that writer's practiced for years to do that, and both of you were able to put your heart on paper.
To find your voice like that.
Commendable.
Congratulations on your achievement.
Thank you so much.
And we hope to see you next year, too. Then you'll be more comfortable.
Yeah.
Also, just wanted to thank you for bringing Mrs. Pryor in. It's wonderful. It's really nice to see teachers that have had an impact and to come back to be able to celebrate that here. So, and thank you very much for coming.
I could also add, I believe I was at a faculty meeting as a guest one day, and is that when you shared a little bit of this writing?
I think so, yes.
And so, Mrs. Pryor was so impressed with what you had written that she wanted to share a little bit of it out with the Elmwood faculty. And I think that just goes to show how fondly she thought of you, and that when you leave a teacher's classroom, you still have that impact on your teachers even a number of years later. So, she had expressed to the entire Elmwood faculty how proud she was of you and how impressed she was with the work that you had done and accomplished. So, you are definitely well-remembered at the Elmwood School, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Fame.
Congratulations to both of you. Finally famous.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to Mrs. Pryor, too. We'll miss you.
Thank you. It's interesting hearing it.
Good luck at the State House on the 23rd. Yeah, it's going to be great.
Enjoy it.
That's exciting.
It is.
Thank you, guys.
I love when we have recognitions like this.
I know.
It could feel good for you. Yeah. So, at this point, we have an opportunity for public comment. If there are people who would like to come up and make a comment, this would be the time to do so. Sadly, think we are...
Yeah. They're all here to recognize each other.
So, if there is no one here for public comment, then we would move into, we have a student council report.
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Want to just introduce yourself, just so that people watching at home can...
I'm a sophomore, Brian Keefe.
I'm Luke McDonald. I'm a junior.
I'm Steve Mathieu. I'm also a junior.
So, this past month at HHS, it's been a hectic week of testing. Last month, the sophomores had the English MCAS, which went really smoothly. This week is AP testing, which also went really smoothly. Next week, we have the math MCAS, and then early June, we have the biology MCAS. So, last Friday, we had prom in Foxborough at the Lakeview Pavilion, or Pavilion, excuse me, and that went very smoothly. Everyone was very safe and had a great time. And thank you to the parents who put on an awesome after-prom. That was a lot of fun as well. Our sports, spring sports have been going awesome as well. Our baseball team is in contention to win the league, and we're members of the lacrosse team, so we came just after practice. So, sports are going great, and the art show is going on right now, as you all probably saw walking in.
We only have a couple, few events coming up. This Monday is going to be the senior project presentation. So, for the last month or so, the seniors have been coming up with different projects. Each senior, they can have a partner or work by themselves. They meet with a teacher who like, signs off their ideas. So, some people are like, making their own music, some are fishing, so they're going to come with their presentation, so we're all looking forward to that. A lot of times, the teachers will let us go see it a little bit, so that's fun.
Is it in the assembly or is it in the classroom?
It takes place in the gym, so just like, a lot of times during our elective or during lunch, we'll be able to walk down and hear what some of the seniors did, so that's going to be pretty cool. Starting early June is going to be elections, so for student council and prince, oh, not principal, president and vice president, they're going to give their speeches, so we're all looking forward to that. A little nervous, but hopefully get elected again.
So, are you all running again?
Yeah.
And then, student council is going to put on the Hiller Fest again, so that's something we do every year. It's like a cookout outside on the backfield. All the clubs come, and they each have like, their own little boards. You play games, there's cornhole, there's volleyball. So, it's always a great time, kind of wind down the school year, end the school year, wrap it up. It's always really fun, so we'll be putting that on early June. And that's pretty much all we have for today, so thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
And then, it's over. Is this the first time you did the MCAS on the computer?
Yes.
How'd that go?
Went pretty smoothly, yeah. The school set up like, their own separate like Wi-Fi, so that everything could run smoothly, so we didn't have to interfere with any of the other classes running while we took the test, so it went really well. Yeah.
And then, you'll be done with MCAS.
Yeah.
That's great.
Exactly. Well, good luck with the election and all your speeches and stuff.
Thank you.
Lacrosse and everything else.
And lacrosse, yep, yep.
Busy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Me, too.
That moves us then into the F1 visa program update, and we have Mr. Hannah here to talk about that.
Thank you for welcoming me tonight. It was nice to see Mr. Bovair honored earlier. He was a teacher at Elmwood, I believe, in fifth grade when I was there back in the 80s. And Mrs. Porter, I had, and Mr. Bovair was the new younger teacher, and now, 25, 30-some odd years later, he's now moving on. So, obviously, he's been a great addition to the Hawkington community. That's really good stuff. I put a picture on Facebook earlier this week of my mom and I, and my first grade teacher, Stacia Cakely, actually commented on it, saying, "What a wonderful picture of you and your mom. She was so kind to me as I was a young teacher." And they then had a conversation underneath the picture, talking about, you know, the relationship that exists between elementary school teachers and parents, and, you know, the high care level the parents have for their children, their safety and their growth, and then the responsibility the teachers end. It was just funny to see those two go back and forth a bit about their relationship, but it's so evident here with the first two presentations. I just thought I'd share those thoughts. But again, thanks for inviting me this evening. I hope I can go through a slideshow and bring you up to speed with where our international program is and answer any questions you have. So, I put a quote there. Always been somewhat of a Dave Matthews Band fan. I enjoy the music that he writes, and the horns especially, but he also has some interesting perspective on life. And in this quote, I do feel like one area our world can improve upon is moving away from an us-versus-them mentality, and instead, look at us as we, and what can we learn from one another? And I think that the international program does that at a very local level. We bring friends from all over the world and spend, you know, five or 10 months together, learning and living with and exchanging ideas and culture and celebrations. And to me, if we do that consistently at a young age, then as people grow older, they'll be resistant to an us-against-them attitude as adults, because they can recall as sophomores, juniors, seniors in high school, making friends from faraway lands that don't meet the statement that maybe was just made. And as a former history teacher and a student of the world, so to speak, as our globe continues to become more crowded, I think it's critical that we work to be more kind and understanding of one another, and I really feel like this program captures that essence. So, we can move to the next slide?
Maybe I can. Not sure why it's not moving.
It's been up there for a bit. Maybe it's frozen.
Yeah, I think it might be. It's really going now.
We'll go back. Here we are. So, that picture on the upper left is a kind of bulletin board as you walk into the school, and you can see where our cohort came from this year. So, we use the map to show the students in the community from all the different spots, and as you can see, Brazil and China, Vietnam and Thailand, Germany, Italy, Japan, Poland, Spain, and Switzerland were all countries where students of ours came from this past school year. Over to the right is, that's the group of students that was at our orientation in August. They'd only been here in the United States for a few days, and we welcomed them here to the school and brought them up to speed with their guidance counselor and their schedule and our building. And we have a wonderful ambassador program run by one of our world language teachers, Ms. Tice. So, she had already trained and recruited dozens of Hawkington High students who were interested in making strong connections with their international friends early on in that first day. And so, that's the group, and that was our first day there. Underneath are examples of companies that we have worked with and worked with this year, and I put those up because I think it's important to understand that as a program, our main objective is to create as diverse a cohort as possible. Frankly, if we wanted to, we could easily get the 15 or 20-some-odd students from either China or Italy, because those two countries stand out as having the most interest in international travel and student participation. But, we really work with these agencies to try to create as diverse a group as possible. And although most of these countries are westernized-ish, we're working with certain groups and aspects of their companies to try to see, are there other lands that we can make connections with and bring students in from? Because, to the point earlier, that's where I think the work will have long-lasting impact. So, that's kind of where we are this year. That's where our friends came from, that's who we work with, and there's the pictures. We can go on to the next slide. And over the course of the year, we have a number of different events as listed on the left there. International student orientation, and we have a pizza party that transitions to a home football game, and International Night. I'll ask if Dr. Kavanaugh could click on the video. I don't know if the audio is set up for that or not, but this was on International Night, a performance that occurred, which I just, it's only about 20 seconds, but I feel like it's worth hearing if we can get it timed up. And that was a moment during the evening where, you know, the combination of the violin and her voice was so powerful that it silenced what was kind of a loud crowd, a festive crowd, we're eating and exchanging stories and so on. And I just remember having a feeling while she was singing, so I was able to capture a bit of it on video. But as you can see, it was well-attended up to the upper right. We decorated the cafeteria and worked with our food services director to be able to heat up food and really have a nice exchange. We've transitioned that night from a presentation-based evening to much more of kind of like a fluid social engagement, and we have great participation from our students and staff. And so, that's really a nice way to kick off the year. That's in October. And as you can see on the bottom, that's from one of the host families' homes. That's a picture of a Friendsgiving that they had, bringing all of the ambassadors and international students together to kind of celebrate a American holiday and Thanksgiving, but in a manner that, you know, talks about friendship. And so, there's a couple quotes on the bottom. These are from students. We'd asked them to respond to a brief survey, asking like, "What about, could you give us some feedback on your experience?" And as you can see, those are two. But, I would say, one thing that Mr. Longoria, who co-organizes this program with myself, we've looked at in terms of survey feedback from our students is, how can we create a more genuine friendship earlier on in the year? And so, the ambassadors program has allowed for us, I think, to give our students and our friends a more of a genuine and more friendly experience than just getting the academic transcript from a school like Hawkington. Although, you know, I was saying earlier to Ms. Rothmitch about Hawkington being a, in the country of Italy, according to a representative from CIE this morning, as I was working with her on some I-20 documentation, stands out as the number-two most popular high school in the entire country to come to. So, Italy knows about Hawkington, Mass., which is pretty cool, and the students from those places really want to come and be a part of our experience.
Takes the question, what's number one?
Well, it was a school, it was a high school in Southern California, right on the beach. So, I mean, I'm like, all right, I guess I can understand that. so I mean, I'm like, alright, I guess, I can understand that.
Fair enough.
Yeah, exactly, Santa Monica.
And I'll think of us as number one.
Yeah. But, so, in terms of the next slide? So, giving you an idea on tuition, where we stand in terms of per pupil expenditure, for this upcoming school year, we will be, those are the figures, $8,015 for a student who would like to go for only one semester, and $16,030 for a student who will be attending for the full year. And just for your information regarding like the fluidity of our program, with an increase in students at the high school and a premium on space and teacher-student ratio, we made a decision to turn down the size of our cohort coming in for this next school year to 15 F1 students and one J1 student, and we feel like, we increased the number, I think, three years ago, to try to create a foundation of capital to allow for our ambassador program to really thrive, and we've done that, and I think we're in a good position financially to continue that work in relation to the experience both for Hopkinton and our international students, but we felt as though maybe putting the number at 15 would be a bit more reasonable when it came to our student-teacher ratio. So, one of the questions that has come up in the past is, how does this impact our L services for students that English is not their first language? And I know that I've worked closely with Andy Longoria to make sure that our cohort coming in is scoring a bit higher on some of the TOEFL tests that we use to pick candidates, just so as to assure that our resources aren't being stressed on friends that we're bringing in. You know, it's a balance, and in fact, Jill Kimball, one of our L directors, will say, "It's not a bad thing to have a few involved, because not every school has a large cohort of kids receiving those services", so sometimes it can make for a bit of a more comfortable environment, but we're just trying to strike a balance, and we feel like 15 is an appropriate number for this upcoming school year.
So, what is a J1 student?
So a J1 is a true exchange, that's not a tuition student, and we then get in return from a local, I'm trying to think of the name of the class, Kiwanis Club, I think, that authorizes the exchange, and then we in turn get opportunity to have raffles and/or applications for students to travel abroad in a free exchange as well, so it works both So that is the summary of our international program, and at this point, I'd like to just say thank you again for supporting the program and be happy to answer any questions or follow-ups to the presentation.
I love that you call them friends.
I love how integrated they get with the school, I mean, I only had the opportunity to observe one of our students who joined the soccer team, and it was just great to see the interaction between the players and, you know, that sort of matrix of friends right, you know, out of the gate in the fall, so he was just one of the team, brought some great skills, which was excellent. But it's just nice, they just get so involved in everything, and it's a great opportunity for our students and obviously the students who are here, so thank you for pushing it, creating it, shepherding it and growing it, and it's been great.
I feel the same way, that, you know, the exchange is not just for the kids who are coming, but it's also for kids here to see what the world is like, a little glimpse of it, if you will, right? I recall speaking with Ricardo, who came from Italy, and it was amazing to hear his experiences a little bit through the robotics program, and he's actually volunteering at an event tomorrow in town, that's how integrated these kids have become, and so I really applaud all the effort that you've done in bringing such a wonderful presentation to us to kind of get to see what all the kids have been doing. So many thanks to you and also Mr. Longoria.
Mr. Longoria and Ms. Tice, the three of us are kind of the team that operates this, and we work well together, and we all have the same ideas about what a successful program would be, and so that is nice, that's good work.
And I love your quote.
Oh, thank you.
I'm a huge Dave Matthews fan, so I really appreciate.
I was unsure about picking him, I was like, is he?
No, no, that was a win right there, that was a win, but I like the whole sort of intro to this, because that's what I really think is so awesome about it, is it just gives a face to, you know, you don't hear about the people in Italy, you have a face now, and you know this is a person, and it just, I think that makes a huge difference to kids here, anywhere, but for sure in Hopkinton, so, you know, it's amazing, you do great work.
Thanks.
Well done. Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening, thank you very much.
Thanks, Josh. So that brings us into our financial report. Thank you. As we continue to march down to the year-end close, right now, we are still running a positive variance of $66,000. This was through the early part of May, so I've been working with each department and really, you know, one, making sure they have what they need to close the year in terms of anything that they may need for students and teachers, but then also to kind of tighten up what's already been encumbered in making sure that we're keeping an eye on those purchase orders, closing them out when we need to, so now is when we tighten things up.
Hard to say anything at all when you say we're good right now at, you know, so yeah, that's great, fantastic.
Thank you for keeping us in shape financially.
I appreciated the revised revolving accounts report, can I talk about that now? I didn't have a clue. With the notes about what the accounts are, I think that's really helpful, I had some questions, and it was really nice to see the notes on the same page for those of us who lose track, so.
So they'll be there now going forward?
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, then that, if there are no more questions or comments, moves us into the superintendent's report.
Okay. Also, I just have a few of the events that are going on, that have gone on recently. On May 8th, Emma McNamara did her book reading in the middle school courtyard, I don't know if you are aware that she is a published author, this is available on Amazon if you're interested, but she did a reading and it was just lovely to see her aglow.
We saw, if I'm not mistaken, something she had written for a science publication.
Yes, yes. The nonfiction piece, and she said it was outside her comfort zone. I remember her speaking to that.
We do have them coming in to do the presentation for the Upper Charles Trail tonight, you know that it's later in our agenda, but Tim Person and I did walk it recently, so if you take a look at the picture on the left, you can sort of see the start of the trail, it's actually kind of nice and dry there, but it's really quite open without any work having been done to it at all. In the upper right-hand corner, that's the only place where the trail actually sort of gets close to a field that our kids might be using at some point in time, I think that's Field 10, and down below, you can see where the trail sort of spills out, and it's very wet down there. That's closer to the turf field, so the beginning is over by, you know, sort of the driveway to Hopkins, and the end is over by the turf field.
Dr. Kavanaugh, did you determine, is that beginning where the kids walk to get to K Lot, is that part of the cut-through to the parking lot, or is that a separate trail in the same patch of woods?
So, they take that trail to get to the cut-through for K Lot.
Right, it kind of bends, right?
So the K Lot kind of, the path they take to K Lot kind of forks along the trail.
So it's coincident to start?
Yeah.
And then they diverge, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Elmwood had their Colonial Crafts Day, so it's very interesting to go and see this, they're doing, you know, finger crocheting, but where they do their tinsmith work, if it's in a classroom that's close to the parking lot, you can be outside in the driveway and hear all those little hammers going tink, 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 it's kind of crazy, but they, they're all in costume and they're all excited to be doing their crafts, it's just a lovely event. You will recall that we lost Cindy Martel, so the Elmwood School has now developed the Cindy Martel Reading Corner, so it's just a beautiful little space, the wall mural was just recently completed, and the other thing that's going on at Elmwood is they are now selling diversity buttons for $5, and the proceeds from their diversity buttons will go to fund some of their diversity events, they have added the Chinese Lunar New Year, they've got, you know, International Night coming up next week on the 23rd, I think, and.
And where can you buy a diversity button?
I think you can actually buy it right from the Elmwood School.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact.
There's a link on that as well, to do it online.
Oh, there may be a link too.
It's nice.
Jen, I just got ours tonight.
Ah.
Mrs. Carver was good enough to bring them to us.
It's a great design, I don't know who did it.
Yeah.
Isn't it really cute?
Yeah. I don't know, Tim wants to speak to this, but we've got a good old-fashioned sinkhole at the Elmwood School.
And the stories that we really did, do we know how deep that is? We have no idea, right?
I would say it's probably about three, four feet deep, and probably about the same width around.
Have we had a sinkhole in that area before?
A little further back, there was one prior to me starting, so probably three, four years ago, I think, much smaller.
Okay.
But we're in a contract, we have safely zoned it off, so we're very curious about the sinkhole.
Oh, yes. We've had many conversations about the sinkhole at my house.
There's an engineering lesson in there somewhere, I don't know what it is, but.
I told him there were no sinkholes around here, and he goes, "Oh, no, mommy, there was one on our playground", so, yeah.
That's correct.
Oh, he's right, put me right down.
There is a link on the Hopkinton HPTA website for those diversity buttons.
Oh, great, thank you.
Last Friday, the grand march before the junior prom, that is also kind of an amazing event, the kids just look beautiful, and, you know, Weston Nurseries does a really nice job of making the place look just lovely. So I thought I would bring you up to date on enrollment, this is always a good one, so, you know, we had a conversation with the voters at town meeting, since the annual town meeting, we've had 12 new students enroll. I think at town meeting, I had said we had 217 kindergarten kids enrolled, which was true, but what we hadn't thought about was, we have kids who are currently in our preschool who will move right into kindergarten, who didn't need to enroll, so our kindergarten total at this point in time is exactly at 250, last year we were at 264, so we may be in a little bit of a dicey place with kindergarten. Our other two very large grades right now, grade six has 308 enrolled, and grade eight has 316, two of our recent enrollees are also ninth graders.
Is that, sorry to interrupt, but is that the current eighth grade, not next year's eighth grade, or is that?
It's next year's eighth grade, next year's, I think. Yes, it's, these are next year's numbers, for sure.
What is, do you have?
Current seventh grade was small, so that's a big, I mean, not small, but smaller, that's a big jump for them.
Oh, maybe we do have the wrong number set, I don't know. Something did make me think that we had.
Is this one of, you know, I remember there being a bubble class which is in high school right now, right?
I want to say they're juniors.
Oh, is it, okay.
Maybe they're sophomores, I think. Sophomore classes is quite large.
So how big is it, and are we getting there with these numbers? Do we know what that bubble class size is?
It's well over 300.
Eighth grade is pretty big.
It's over 300 for sure.
No, but I'm seeing these for the first time, I mean, almost all the times that I've seen, the numbers have been below 300 for almost all grades besides that bubble class, and now I'm seeing these two, about 300 for the first time, in my recollection.
No, I agree with you, it's usually like 290 something.
The current eighth grade is over 300.
Right.
So the NESDEC report for sixth grade, and this is using, I believe, the October 1 enrollment data at the time, so sixth grade for this year, October 1, was 301, eighth grade was 313, to give you a reference point.
So that must be this year.
Yeah, so that's correct, and that's this year's sixth grade and eighth grade, then.
And which is the largest class size?
What's grade 10?
Grade 10?
Grade 10 is, well, 323 was what it was.
Yeah, in October.
Yep.
Wow. There are multiple classes getting to that number.
And the graduating class, I'm guessing, is smaller than the current eighth grade? Graduating class is 286. So that, this high school's gonna be hopping with.
Bursting at the seams is the right answer.
Yep.
So to that end, I think last time we were together, I had mentioned that, or maybe it was at town meeting, I had mentioned that we brought in DRA, which was the architectural firm that had done Marathon, and so they toured the high school with Mrs. Rothmick and Mr. Person, I should say, I brought in, they brought in, DRA, and after that tour, they submitted to us a proposal, and you can see what the proposal says, that they will do an assessment of the subject area identified, as well as an assessment of the full faculty, full facility for space utilization, so that's really good for us, if they come in here and just take a look at the entire high school and figure out if we are best using our space and how it might be alternately utilized. The goal of the effort would be to identify the maximum classroom space that may be developed throughout additions, through additions, renovations and the repurposing of existing space. The cost for that is $9,650, and I think that that will be money very well spent for us to figure out what the addition's going to look like, get a cost for the addition and get a cost for any other repurposing that we see fit, which will be good when, if we need to present this information to town meeting to get a capital project, so that we have, you know, some accurate information for them.
Dr. Kavanaugh, is that separate from the growth study that we funded through town meeting?
That is separate.
Okay, so this is targeted for the high school? There's no overlap?
Yeah, and you, the two of you can probably speak better than I can.
Yeah, I mean, really what we're looking for is an order of magnitude in terms of cost to put that, you know, three-story addition onto the back of that wing. The school capacity study will give us different configurations, but this will give us an actual cost to build that, and what does that, you know, what does that mean? And then we could take that original estimate, if we want to go further and go into that deeper dive, then they would, you know, be able to use that, put together, you know, design, engineering, you know, all those next steps, so this is really just that initial phase, really focusing on that addition. The school capacity will look at us district-wide.
Well, oh, sorry, sorry. It says classroom space, and I know the addition is classroom space, so I'm wondering if either of those studies will get at free space, like just traffic volumes of students up and downstairs during passing time, or, you know, who do we have during study blocks, where are they, just sort of the non-classroom space, and how many students can, you know, safely and comfortably pass stairways, hallways?
So I think the school capacity study would get more at that.
Get to that, okay, thank you.
When will the capacity study be complete, and when will this particular study be complete?
So this one, I believe, the, so keep in mind that this is all going to be July 1 money, so this will begin July 1, I believe the timeframe for this was 68 weeks for this to be completed. The school capacity study, we're putting together that scope now, and then we will go out and knock on doors for people to give us a cost estimate for the scope of services that we're looking for, but nothing really can begin until July 1.
Okay.
And I would imagine that the school capacity study would at least take another 6 to 8 weeks as well.
Okay, so it could be sometime in the fall when we get the result?
Correct, yeah. You know, and this really, you know, the goal is to have a good number that we could then bring to town meeting. The school capacity study could then lead to other triggers of things that we may want to discuss further.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing, and this is critical, looking at those numbers in sixth grade and eighth grade, and thank you for bringing this.
Trying to be proactive, as much as we can be, right? I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and I want to say thank you to Susan and Tim too for this work, they're working very hard on this. And that was my last slide, but we've already had a lot of questions, so.
I was also thinking that we need to set summer dates for our meetings.
Yes, yes we do. Look at our schedules and come back to that.
Great.
It's nice to think summer's actually coming.
Oh, it might.
It might. Alright, so that brings us into the school committee chair report, and I have approved the payroll warrant S-19023, which has been included in your packet. I have also approved warrant 19-091, 19-092, 19-093, and 1-094, they are also included in your packet. So, school committee office hours, and we met since we did the senior center, but we, it would be nice to, and we can talk offline since we don't have anything new to report, to find a date to do something in June, so we can put that to think about. Anyone have liaison reports?
I have a few.
Go ahead, go ahead.
At the tech meeting that we had, we approved the annual budget, I'd shared that with all of you a few weeks ago, that went very smoothly. We also reviewed Dr. McGonigal- We also reviewed Dr. McGonigal, and that was very well, you know, everybody had positive things to say. In my own experience working with her, she's always been very good in taking feedback and converting it around, and I shared that. She actually had taken on the request related to doing a workshop on giftedness, which was attended by about 50 educators from across Massachusetts, so I was very thankful for that. One other thought on the tech front is because it's a collaborative, and it's serving 15 districts, is we can utilize some of their services as a collaborative. And I talked to a few folks, and it looks like conversations on diversity and diversity training are happening in all collaboratives, in all, many districts which are part of the collaborative. So I'd shared this thought with Dr. Kavanaugh to see if we can explore working through tech, if any kind of training could be provided. I mean, there will be some kind of training that can be global where we can take, and there might be some which are very specific, but to look to see if there is any cost savings through our partnership with tech. That was one. The other one is on the Marathon Fund Committee. I had a very good meeting with Josh Crossetti from the IT Department, and we are working to put together a webpage on their webs, on the town's website. And we're modeling it after the historical district commission's website, trying to put in some information. There's lots of good work that goes on. We reviewed lots of scholarships that came from our high school athletes. I think there were about 43 or so scholarship requests that came in, and we picked three male and three female. And that was very interesting to see the impact of various athletic programs that the kids have undertaken, how it has impacted them. It was wonderful to review all of that. The other one is on the school website front. Meg and I had put together, you know, you had all shared some verbiage related to each of the subcommittees and what the work is. We had looked at it and kind of collated and tried to put them into categories of how our subcommittees are formed. But we are holding back on posting that based on feedback we received from Mr. Gosch, that right now we are in the process of moving over, so hold off on that, but at least in terms of content, that work is going on. On the senior center front, on May 23, there is a dance that is happening with the Happy Healers Club and the seniors, and I'm very thankful to Dr. Kavanaugh and Ms. Renaud, who has been championing this, and I think more collaboration between the schools and the senior center, and just bringing the community together. So if any of you is able to join, that'll be fabulous. It's an ice cream social. And the Holliston Band is coming, so that should be all fun.
Sorry, it's, it's with our senior center?
Yes.
And the Holliston Band is coming?
That's right.
Interesting. And what date is it?
May 23. And I can confirm the timing. I believe it's around 12, noonish, that's what I remember. But I can confirm the time back to you, and it'd be great to have people there.
Next Thursday.
Right. The other thing I want to just give a quick update on is the work that you had all asked us, asked Meg and I to look at with regard to the diversity and inclusion subcommittee, or to see what it'd be. I had a very productive conversation with Dr. Kavanaugh, and we talked a little bit about what that might mean, what would be the boundaries, et cetera. I had put something together, some statistics, some thoughts on what it could be, like a working group or what have you. And Dr. Kavanaugh and I, we want to just sit and review and see what would be the best and most effective way for us as a school committee to support the work that she is doing. So that's the update. That's it.
Thank you. Love the collaborative, bringing the community connected with the schools and at the senior center.
I'm excited. I'm very thankful that all of you, even, you know, even with the office hours, I think we have done very, very well there, and I must also give credit to Amy Beck. I think she has been very open as well and supportive in so many ways.
Thank you.
I have one. The Marathon School Building Committee met Monday, and just some little things. One of the things that I think in particular is so great is that having Mike Shepherd on that committee, he is, his mind is always thinking ahead, and so he is actually working to make sure the order of conditions that were set out for the wetlands, for the construction of that building, doesn't come back to bite us 25 years later, like some other orders of conditions have come back over the last couple of years. So anyway, he's, he's very proactive about it and making sure that things are set. So he's, he's been making phone calls and connecting people and saying, "Where do you need me to sign? Who do you need to sign?" And, and making sure that that happens, which is great. So we don't have to look forward to that 25 years from now. And then the other thing that I think is, is great, that as the building gets lived in, as the number of kids in that building has increased steadily over the, over time, one of the things that Lauren noticed is that one of the sidewalks that initially she didn't think was going to get a lot of traffic is made of stone dust, and it is used as a primary entrance and exit for the building. So they're going to work on getting some codes that we can use through the building committee to pave that so that they're not constantly tracking some stone dust in and out of the building, because the kids do use that as their way in and out of the building to get, I think, out to the playground? I think, I don't remember if it's sounding in their head, so maybe you know more than me, but it's, I think it's to the playground, which is great. And then the other thing, just for the sake of anyone who's interested in knowing about the air conditioning as we get into warmer months, it's not always going to be running. That was one of my questions, like, this building's going to be empty. Are we going to have our AC on all the time? So ESY is going to be there, and they'll make sure those folks are comfortable. But that it is the first year, so just try and work out those kinks. I thought that was good information to bring back to you all. So we're not, we're not paying for AC for the entire building, the entire year, or the entire summer, at least. That's not the plan at this moment. And that's about it, I guess.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the youth commission held their first ACT prep course in conjunction with Education Station and with support of the school committee and the schools. And it was very successful, so next year they'll run two of those ACT prep programs, which lasts for several weeks, and they offer it at a discounted price for those who need the financial assistance. But it's wonderful they're doing that for the community, because I know those other, the proper programs at Kaplan or wherever else are very expensive. Little word from CPAC, we are still accepting submissions for the Inspire Award. So if anyone has a child who's on an IEP, and there's a particular teacher, or staff member, or cafeteria worker, or bus driver who's been just great with your kid, please submit a little paragraph about that person so we can give them a certificate of appreciation and a small token.
Meg, I think you also had a comment on the school, the website of the school committee menu, because there was a thought to kind of retake the pictures of the school committee, and Meg said, "Why bother wasting that money?"
Why spend money on a photographer? I just want a photo of an oak tree in my place. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gosch brought in a photographer, a recent graduate, Olivia, I forget her last name.
Andrea?
I'm not sure, who came, I think, for one or two days last week and did a lot of photography for the new website. And I think he plans to bring her back again. So there may be a knock on our door to look photogenic for, for a period, and I think he's keen to get some group...
For a period.
Some group photos. A very short period. We only have to, like, five minutes, but I think he'd like some group photos too, for the website, so it's not just individual headshots, but...
And, and I hear you, and I think I'm open to the idea that if any member doesn't want that picture posted, that's okay too.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Oak trees are nice.
Oak trees are much more interesting to me. I have a quick website update. It's very exciting. The website subcommittee voted unanimously to approve the design of the homepage. I have to say, it went through several extra rounds of design review with Mr. Gosch and his team and the parents on the subcommittee who have been very engaged and providing a lot of input. And they were holding fast to the things that are very important to the community. And I think, I feel confident that the design we ended up with provides nice places on the homepage to capture all the important things, the events, the news, opportunities for us to say something about the district, some social media and so forth. So I'm excited when you get to see it. We're not doing the big reveal just yet. Following that, we did the mobile review, mobile design review, first round. And while generally it takes the homepage and just sort of shrinks it to mobile and stacks, there is actually quite a lot to tweak to make it look the way we want it to. So that's kind of where we are right now. Because of all the design iterations to get it where we wanted it, the, well, the good news is that the homepage is still going to come to us in July, so we should be launching the homepage, as far as I know, in July. We have not slipped that schedule. The school pages may defer to August, which the homepage will give us an opportunity to do our registrations, do all, you know, have all the content that's actually important in the summer. The principals will have more time in July and August to get their content on the homepages up, so. I'm thrilled that we didn't have to slip the homepage, because I was very nervous about that. So we won't have to continue hosting our existing site, incurring the extra costs and so forth.
Yeah, I, I enjoyed seeing the demo. That looked so nice. Thank you.
It's amazing. It really is. It's really good. And, you know, we were focused on things like, you know, intuitive navigation, good search, good access to events and news, and all the things that the community said they wanted. So hopefully, when it gets rolled out, they'll feel that they can use the site to do what they need to do. I have one other, it's kind of not a subcommittee thing, but just a shout out related to the seniors. We do invite them, as an FYI, to the Pops concert, which is happening this Sunday at 3:30 in the High School Athletic Center. It's an amazing concert. Every musical group in the high school lines up around the gym, at the Athletic Center, I should say. And, you know, we bounce from chorus to jazz band to orchestra to band. The seniors come over. There are tables with refreshments and so forth. It's a great concert. So if anyone is bored or just wants some great music, I encourage you to come by. It's really a highlight of the year for the musicians and the parents and the community. And the jazz band is playing in Boston at the Hatch Shell also on Sunday. I think at noon is the time for the performance. It's an honor because they were recognized at the gold level, so along with all the other gold winners, they have an opportunity to perform in Boston. It's our first ever, so they're very excited.
When is the Pops concert?
Sunday, this Sunday, they're both this Sunday. It's a busy Sunday of music. So the Pops concert has been shifted to 3:30 in the afternoon.
Oh, so the kids can do both?
They have to do both, because all the jazz band people are also in chorus and, you know, band and whatever else, yeah.
They're actually taking buses for students who want to go to, to watch and to be in Boston, which is nice.
That is good.
Great, thank you. I had a, a quick update with the bridge. Had a tremendous outpouring of support from people who wanted to provide snacks and things like that. That is one of the needs that was identified in the schools, so that people, children who don't have snacks aren't going hungry, and they're not sitting awkwardly at their desk currently. We have had staff members who are providing out of their own pockets for kids, and the community is stepping in to do that. So I have received a tremendous number of actual stuff from people in the community, and also really support from people wanting to help move this effort forward, so I was very excited.
I saw that a little bit on Facebook, Nancy, and I just love the idea, and I'm so glad you and Don are doing this fabulous work. Thank you.
And some great help with people in each building. It really has, and from the youth and family services, it really has been a feel-good thing to see where, as a community, we're able to try to support people in, kids in our buildings. I have had emails and messages from people who have been impacted by things like this directly. And you don't always see the faces and hear people, but it, there are real needs. There are kids going hungry that we don't always see, so that's...
I'm also hoping with the positive variance that Ms. Rothermack is reporting, maybe next year we will be able to earmark some funds even to support the work that you're doing.
So we'll see. Thank you. Anyway, that brings us into new business, and the first item we have is the Lou and Kathy White Scholarship.
So each year you are asked to approve payment from the town treasurer for the Lou and Kathy White Scholarship, although there are many, many scholarships, for whatever reason, this one was set up just a little bit differently. So I am requesting and recommending that the school committee authorize payment from the town treasurer for the Lou and Kathy White Memorial Scholarship in the amount of $500.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
I guess all three of us.
There's a mass exodus. Can I ask a question? Do you have an item that you want to speak to instead of having to stay all night, if that's okay? If we, yeah?
So I think Tim is here, but I think Jane is also coming, yes.
Oh, for the trails?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, I know that, but I figured I, you know, I mean, it's exciting at 8:15 as it is at 8:45, so.
But maybe when Jane gets here, we can move them right up.
Definitely.
Depending on where we are, right?
Moving on to new business item B, Accept Board of Directors. Dr. Kavanaugh?
So for the past year, I have been the Hopkinton representative on the Board of Directors at Accept, and I am asking that you vote to appoint me to that same position on the Board of Directors.
Any questions? Okay, I'm seeking a motion to move to appoint Dr. Carol Kavanaugh to the Accept Board of Directors for the 2019-2020 school year. There's a typo there on the agenda, if that could be corrected.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So this passes.
It does.
Moving on to item C, Elmwood School Gift Account. Dr. Kavanaugh?
All right, so we have a few gift account approvals in a row here. The first one is to approve $299.79 from Box Tops to the Elmwood School Gift Account.
Looking for a motion to move to accept the $299.79 donation for Elmwood School Gift Account.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Great, so it passes. And on to our chair again. We are now at the Hopkins. We did the Elmwood, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is another Box Top donation. This one is going into the Hopkins School Gift Account, and I am looking for your approval to accept $312.20.
So moved.
Motion by Mina?
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, and it passes. That moves us into the next Hopkins. Yes.
So the Hopkins School has a fifth grade talent show fundraiser. This year, they raised $3,011, and I am requesting and recommending that you accept this money for the Hopkins School Gift Account.
This is an impressive amount, and I approve, I mean, I make a motion to move.
Motion by Mina. Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second what Mina said.
Second by Jen. All those in favor?
Yes.
It must be quite a talent show.
It is. The amount of work that those volunteers put in to make this happen is unbelievable, and the kids are amazing. Unbelievable, so.
I think there was like a record number of acts this year, too.
Oh, yes, yes. There were requests put out to say, "If you were thinking of doing a solo, if you want to try and team up." There were so many kids who were so excited to do it.
I love the great talent show. It's so fun.
Yep.
All right, so moving on to the middle school gift account. I'm requesting and recommending that you accept $500 from Hopkinton Mobile Station Alliance Energy LLC to be put in the middle school gift account.
So moved.
Motion by Mina.
Second.
By Jen. All those in favor?
Yes.
So it passes. That moves us to letter G.
Okay, this is another one for the middle school gift account. The gift is in the amount of $3,641.55 from the Alpha Omega Council for the Boston Marathon, and this will go into the middle school gift account.
Can I ask a question? Is, do you know, are they still trying to afford sound equipment for the courtyard? Do you know where they are with?
I don't know that.
Susan, do you maybe know? Are they trying to get sound equipment for the courtyard in the middle school still?
I'm not sure. I don't know where they are.
Okay.
They did just put lights in.
Okay.
I feel like lights and sound were the two main holdovers after construction, and I just wasn't sure if this is funding that. It's great that we got this gift.
Great. Oh, so we, we need a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion by Mina and a second.
Second.
By Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that so carries.
Okay. And you have a request from Ms. King from the Athletic Department. We have three unified sports. I think we have to approve the coaching stipends for. So let's take a look at those. Remind myself of what they are.
Track, basketball. Two are unified, one was football, I think. Middle school football.
Yes. So unified basketball, unified track and middle school football. And she is looking to put all of those coaching positions in at seven units. So we are looking for an approval for that.
I make a motion to accept the coaching stipends.
Second.
By Meg and a second by Mina. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. And so that also carries.
All right. And here's our last gift account. This is going into the marathon gift account. $24 from Hannafords.
I make a motion to accept.
A second.
Second. Motion by Mina, a second by Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. And that brings us into old business A, the Upper Charles Trail.
We're a little early, right? A couple of minutes early?
I do think that Jane is planning to be here.
Okay, yes. So do we want to go out of order to item B and come back to that when she comes?
Sure. I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay. So the school committee procedures, the agenda planning, you'll remember that Mina and I, Mina has really spearheaded this work and we had met to discuss the agenda planning and worked on coming up with language to make it clear for people going forward on how to bring agenda items forward, not just for us, but for people in the community who might have things that they're interested in seeing the school committee look at. And kind of the fallback is always to be something under our purview, but also to make a clear path for people to know what to do going forward. So I'm open to edits, suggestions, comments, questions, anything.
Yes, we were also looking to perhaps learn from other committees as well, but we wanted this as the first step to see if Dr. Kavanaugh had any feedback or any of you had any feedback, if this seems reasonable.
And are there things in the, in how you see what we're doing as practice that we could be doing better or that I have, we have not captured accurately?
I think the biggest thing that will help inform this process is that calendar, that drumbeat of things that happen on a regular basis. Because I think, I feel that it exists. I'm living it this year. And I know that something comes up and a question will come up and we always, that's when we do that. And if, when you're new, you don't know that that's when you do it. So I think I continue to push for that calendar because I think knowing what's coming up helps when you think about agenda items that you might want to add as well. And the only other thing I would say is, is there a process by which the chair and our superintendent would potentially determine if something should be considered an executive session or not that might come up? Because sometimes one doesn't know when one is requesting a discussion. And as everyone knows, we can only discuss things as a committee at a posted meeting. And sometimes, you know, a request might end up touching on something that's contractual or that is unclear to the committee. So would that be, would that determination be made?
So that determination, I think, would be made in the agenda planning session, which would include the chair and the vice chairs. The model we've been trying, we're not always able, I wasn't able to be at the last one and sometimes it just varies. But the ideal is for the chair and the vice chair to do it together. To look at, I mean, the really very specific legal exemptions that require it to be an executive session and to kind of look at, does it fall under litigation? Does it fall under contract negotiations? Things of that nature would be my.
Okay.
I think you bring up a valid point, you know, again, thinking from the perspective of someone who's coming brand new. If they bring up something during the liaison reports as something which they shouldn't be. So I think, just to clarify, what are those items which need to go through, go to an executive session discussion? And those items must only be sent via email and not brought up, I would think, right? If it is related to any performance or what have you, right? There are stipulations around what goes into executive session. So we need to be careful about what we say here.
So in terms of, if I'm, I just want to make sure I understand what you guys are, because I think you're saying the same thing, is that you're not talking about the actual discussion of the item. You're talking about the bringing it up to ask if it can be on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, that's the piece I was missing.
Sometimes when you're new and you have a question, you don't always know what you're asking.
Right.
Even, and it may be a valid topic, but you don't always, I would just look to the chair, the planning committee or whatever, who's receiving the request to then make a determination.
Yes. So I think it can be asked in a public session if it can be put on the agenda without violating.
Correct.
For the most part.
Details.
Because you can't, right, because you can't go into detail if it's not on the agenda anyway.
Right. But I think just having some clarity as to which all are the items and to what extent can you speak even about what you want on the agenda. And just saying that things of that nature should probably be sent via email to the chair.
So, yes. So in, that brings back to a good point. It would be important to include in this information, the exemptions to open meeting law for executive sessions.
That's right.
So that people have it right there and don't have to kind of, I think I Googled it at the beginning, but you know, that it's right there.
Can I make one other? I mean, this isn't a big deal, but it, as you said, for new people, would it make sense just to have an agenda item, a standing agenda item that is similar to our liaison reports? The expectation is you come prepared with something. You don't think of it off the cuff. But if you do have something that you want to put on the agenda, because putting it in liaison reports, it's not really a liaison report. It's an agenda item.
Sorry, that's not clear. I think what I put, it's the opportunity to ask to have it put on the agenda, not the opportunity to actually discuss it.
No, I, right, I understand that. But I mean, having that opportunity be included in liaison reports is fine, but it's not a really liaison report. So would it make sense just to have a standing, like we do already, superintendents report, liaison reports, future agenda items? And then, you know, the expectation, I guess, the norms, the procedures, whatever you want to call them, that we all agree on at the beginning of the year, you don't come up with something that night and just decide you want, you have it prepared ahead of time. So you're not just throwing stuff out there and taking up a half an hour of time on future agenda items. You just, you know ahead of time what you want to have added to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think when Nancy started off her role as chair, she had done that at several meetings.
Future agenda items.
Right, a future agenda items. And I think perhaps one of the procedures to also think about is that when an agenda item is proposed, do we keep track of it and kind of log it to find that spot within the calendar, if you will?
Yes.
Right. So I think that's the other piece to work on as we look at the calendar. What we can do perhaps, you know, we had thought of putting that calendar on the school committee page also. So we are held back a little bit right now, but it doesn't stop us from putting something on a Google Drive perhaps, or we can figure out a way how we can make it available. I know, we're getting into summer.
Good though.
Yes.
It's good to get it written down. You guys are good. Smart.
Yeah, we are going slow, Jen, based on your feedback take four, so.
Wait, which feedback?
It's about how many procedures we pick to elaborate on.
Just pick a couple at a time.
Yes.
Okay.
So just so I can kind of clean this up, do we want to have a future agenda standing thing to go back to that?
Does that make sense?
Yes, I like that idea. I like that idea.
All right.
And perhaps it's right after liaison reports.
Yep. Makes perfect sense. But give it a five-minute time slot.
Yes, okay. But so, and I think that's how we kind of moved away from it, was it felt like it was taking up a lot of times and our list was growing faster than we were able to keep up in a timely way.
Yes, we were a very active committee when we started the year. Yes, ambitious.
Brevity is always welcome.
Indeed. Okay. So I have shifted that in and we can think about that a little now. I've got to go back to the, I've lost my agenda here and trying to fix that.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to the Upper Charles. Yes, thank you.
You guys are up.
Old business A.
Thank you.
Come on.
All right. So, welcome back.
Okay.
Hi.
Yes. Yes, thank you for coming back and thank you, Tim, for your patience tonight. So we are bringing back Jane and Tim to talk about the Upper Charles Trail Committee. And ultimately this evening, we are hoping that you will, as a school committee, approve to construct a portion of the Upper Charles Trail on school grounds as outlined in the Upper Charles Trail Committee, alternate three, I believe.
Yes.
Yes.
So I am here to answer any more questions that you may have had since the last time we met. And I'm not sure, but I have a feeling there may be a few.
I had a couple of questions which I think have been answered, but for the sake of the viewing public, I will just share them. I support alternate three. I think it looks like a really solid plan. I have concerns about one and two. So if for some reason this should fall back to one or two, I got a little nervous about sharing the roadway on Loop Road, which is already so heavily trafficked. And now we're adding the buses exiting and so forth. So I love alternate three because it goes away from the Loop Road. I did see on here that there was a, an indication of a stoplight at the end of the Loop Road. And I know that Mrs. Rothermick has talked to the town about that. I think that's not in the scope of this work, as I understand it?
No, this is very preliminary. And with the next step that we hope, with your permission, if we get permission to come on the property and, you know, that you envision the trail going through here and we're all aiming toward that, our next step would be to apply for the engineering feasibility study. With that, they would have the traffic engineers in there and further study to determine if that were necessary or not. It's definitely not part of this right now. They would also be subject to public hearings and of course your input at that point. So, you know, your input would weigh heavily, whatever we would do.
And so as we had talked about earlier tonight, Dr. Kavanaugh, Dr. Kavanaugh and I had a chance to walk the entire trail. We both put on our hiking boots that day and no picnic, unfortunately, but it actually wasn't too bad. So the trail itself is pretty wide open as you walk through it. You can tell immediately where the rail bed was at one point and what they had kind of done to remove the rail bed. And I think that's why at the low point, it gets a, you know, it holds a lot of water. It's mainly at the end of the trail when you're coming out towards the center trail. And I think that the engineers will figure out how to, much like the center trail, I think they went a little bit to the left or the right, depending on which way you're looking at it, to get out of that kind of waterway on the center trail. And I'm imagining that they'll probably do a similar thing at this one to line up with the center trail a little better and come out of the woods because it has a little incline when you, if you've never been down there, it has a little incline to get up there. But I think, you know, the trail being clear, the kids do use that to get to K Lot, as we talked about earlier. I think having it cleared and the way they've maintained center trail has always been phenomenal. And they continue to do so with the additional cross-country trails that they installed in the last year or so. So, you know, I think it's been a good partnership with us, the Upper Charles Trail Committee thus far. So I don't, I don't see why it would be any different moving forward with, you know, a plan of this magnitude.
Other questions?
No. I hammered you with questions last time. I'm sorry. I felt bad about that afterwards. But it was really because at first I was like.
It is overwhelming. It's a huge project and this is just one small part of it.
And just thinking from the perspective of like this, you know, the schools having to, to give up a little piece of their, but it's for something so great. So, you know, afterwards I felt bad because I kept hammering over these questions. But really, it's a great, it's such a great.
No, it's fine. I appreciate it.
Opportunity for all of us to be able to have this access through and connect all those, all the trail systems. So, I mean, I like your option. It's good.
It helps to see the map because, you know, I was concerned that it was going to go close to like the Hopkins Playground. Clearly it doesn't. It's on the other side of the building. And, you know, looking at the map when we got these slides, it made it much clearer. So I appreciated that.
Like the kids won't be distracted in their classrooms if they see bikes whizzing by or things like that. They won't be able to see it. So I think this makes a lot of sense.
If someday down the road, in my dreamland, we expand the parking lot down there, that H Lot, it still, it doesn't interfere. It's off on the side of, you know, where H Lot is. So I'm all for it.
Oh, good.
I'm personally a big fan of all the work that you all do. Every so often, I get to speak with Mr. Parker.
Oh, yes.
And so fully in support. And I think you all do your work very thoughtfully.
Oh, thank you.
That's very clear. Thank you.
We have a lot of people to answer to, so we try and, try and be thorough in our work.
And this is, this is important work. Thank you for doing what you do.
Oh, thank you. It is important. And we especially value the opportunity to connect the school population with the rest of the town. It's huge. This doesn't have, we don't have these opportunities this often in cities and towns to tie it in like this. So I think it's a, it's a really golden opportunity for Hopkinton.
It's exciting. I am impressed with the depth of the work that you all have done and the commitment you have had carrying it over a number of years now.
It is. And we still have a long way to go. We have small pieces here and there that may not be, make the total trail possible in the next few years. Eventually, I think it will be made. However, we really feel strongly that when this opportunity came up for these grants, that this was really a priority of ours to tie the EMC Park in with the other schools, to the school district, to the center trail, to the downtown. If nothing else, this, we feel that this would be a real legacy for the town.
So how will we word this motion?
So I'm looking at what we had for consideration. So it looks like we are looking for a motion to approve the Upper Charles Trail Committee Town of Hopkinton to construct a portion of the Upper Charles Trail on school grounds as outlined in their alternative three of Phase One of the feasibility development.
I make that very motion.
Second.
So motion by Meg and a second by Mina. All those in favor?
Aye.
So it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you for your patience with us.
About this.
Thank you for your support. And we'll be sure to include you through our progress going along. And I'm sure Tim will be right there along with us, so.
He sure will, yep.
I will look forward to when there's a ribbon cutting or something of that nature as well.
Wouldn't that be nice? We haven't dared to think about that.
Getting more rits, all these important steps.
Closer.
Yes, we are. We're one step closer.
Well, good luck with all of that work.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks again for all the great work you guys do, too.
Thank you. Oh, good night.
Good night. Thanks, Tim.
Good night.
So that brings us into item C, which is an update on the Student Services Director position.
All right. So you know that, I don't know if it was last meeting or two meetings ago, we had a conversation about the search that we had conducted in the district. And I think we had said we had about 20 applicants. We moved six forward. The initial committee interviewed all six of those candidates and put one candidate forward. And I had mentioned that things didn't actually work out so well with that particular candidate. So that left us in a place where we would either have to start a brand-new search or look to see if Dr. Zaleski's contract could be extended by a year. People may have seen that there was a posting last Friday. And that happened because we were still in contract negotiations with Dr. Zaleski, trying to see if we could work something out for an additional year. But the fear being that if things did not work out, we needed to have somebody in that seat on July 1st because every school district needs to have a director of student services. So fortunately, we've been able to enter into some kind of an agreement with Dr. Zaleski. The school committee was able to approve that in an executive session this evening. So the, you know, sort of successful appointment of Dr. Zaleski will happen if she is also willing to sign the contract that has been put forth to her tonight. So that will mean that we will take down that posting in the event that everything works out very successfully. But for now, we're kind of leaving it there just to ensure that we have someone with us on July 1st. So I'd like you to talk a little bit about the parameters of the So I'd let you talk a little bit about the parameters of the contract.
So I don't actually have the.
Would you like me to do that?
Yeah, would you? I want to make sure that I stay within the scope of what's legally.
Sure. So she has been offered a one-year contract with a review on or before January 15th, and, January 15th, 2020. And with a successful review in January 15th, 2020, she would be offered a successor agreement.
And this, even though we did discuss this in executive session, does require a public vote?
It does.
Is that something that we need to take tonight, or is that something that needs to happen after?
So Karen should, they should do theirs now, and then Karen will sign.
Okay. So in that case, I would seek a motion to approve the contract as written?
I make a motion to approve the contract as written.
Motion by Meg. Is there a second?
A second. Oh, Mina can second. It's okay. Give it to Mina.
Second by Mina.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And it is unanimous, and so passes, and I look forward to.
I do, too. I think it will be great continuity for the district.
Thank you to you and Dr. Zaleski for working through this process.
It was a lot of work, but we're in a good place, so thank you.
It has been a lengthy process, and thank you for the perseverance of all who started from back, you know, and now I forget what month we started in all this, but yes. Thank you. That brings us into Item D, which is the Superintendent Evaluation. And as you all know, this is one of the legally required functions of the school committee, is to evaluate the superintendent in public. We, last time, we did have a presentation, and we got the forms that everybody filled out and got back to me. And because, you know, there's so much information, I did not include everything in the draft that I have created, because there was some duplication. And what we're really after is coming for a summary statement. So it could be that as we go through this process and discuss it and look at what I had already provided, we wind up at the end of the day with something different, but I wanted to put something out there as a starting point for our discussion. And then, at the end of this process, to be able to have this be representative of how we feel this year has been with Dr. Kavanaugh and, you know, inform us going forward. So I'm just, people have access to that in front. I did not bring printed copies of that.
So Nancy, are you saying we need to make that first big section more succinct?
Um, not necessarily, but we could make it more succinct if we want. We can edit it as much or as little as we would like. The intent is not just to replicate everything that we've done individually, but to make something that is a standalone document, so that there may be things that I have included that people don't agree with, that should be pulled out, or things that I didn't include that should be added in, but it should be something that, as a committee, we feel we have worked on together here in public as we are required to do. So definitely more succinct is a welcome piece, but before we do that, I just want to go through the actual standards of what we evaluated. And I apologize, because now I'm flipping through about 10 different screens.
We've got a lot of documents.
I've got a lot of documents here. There we go. All right, so in the, this is the group one that I am looking at. So the Step One was to assess the progress toward the goals. And I, if you look at Step One, the Professional Practice Goals, every, in cases where we did not all agree, and in many cases, we did all agree, I averaged them. So in the first Professional Practice Goals, came out as met. The Student Learning Goals came out as met, and the District Improvement Goals also came out as met. Step Two, Assess the Performance Standards. The Standard One is Instructional Leadership, which came out as proficient. Management and Operations also came out as proficient. Standard Three, Family and Community Engagement, also proficient. And Professional Culture, also proficient. And just to note that the proficient is a very good rating for people at home that are not familiar with the language, and this is not always as clear to somebody who doesn't do education, and it was not to me as well at the beginning. So I actually had the opportunity to speak with Glenn Kuchar from the MASC to get a little bit of guidance on this.
And just to read what it says, that proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is a rigorous expected level of performance, so it's not something to be scoffed at.
Exactly.
It's an accomplishment.
It's an accomplishment. So the overall summative performance based on Step One and Two ratings came out as proficient. The rate, the rating on the impact on student learning came out as high. And then the comments we'll come back to after we've gone through, just looking at. So in terms of goals, the Professional Practice Goal, to build the repertoires of administrators, faculty, and staff in cultural sensitivity and diversity with the hopes of ensuring greater social and psychological safety for students, came out as met. Build my own repertoire, and by my, I mean your own repertoire, as the district's instructional leader through participation in the NISIP program, also met. Enhance reading and writing instruction at Hopkinton High School for special educators and special education students, especially as students prepare for the revised MCAS test in the spring of 2019, that also came out as met. Establish a three-year strategic plan for the Hopkinton Public Schools, also came out as met. And develop a, I don't know that I mentioned, this is actually district improvement that we're discussing now, not, no longer, student learning. The final one in this was to develop a budget reflective of students' learning needs as well as the expanding student population in the district, and this one came up as exceeded. So if we go down to the Superintendent's Performance Rating for Standard One, Instructional Leadership, the curriculum ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes, proficient. Instruction ensures that practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work, engage all students, and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness, also proficient. Assessment ensures that all principals and administrators facilitate practices to propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growth, and understanding, and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning, also proficient. Evaluation ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions, also proficient. Data-informed decision-making uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment results and growth data, to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning, also effectiveness. District, and then the overall rating for Standard One was proficient. And we're going to skip down over the comments, because we'll come back to those. And then, the next section was Environment, develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs, proficient. Human Resources Management and Development implements a cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction, development, and career growth that promotes high-quality and effective practice. Scheduling, oh, sorry, that was proficient. Scheduling and Management Information Systems uses systems to ensure optimal use of data and time for teaching, learning, and collaboration, minimizing disruptions and distractions for school-level staff, proficient. Law, Ethics, and Policies understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, and ethical guidelines, proficient. Fiscal Systems develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school-level goals and available resources, proficient. The overall rating for Standard Two is proficient. And skipping down over the comments again, we're going to come into the next section, which is Section 3A, Engagement actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community, proficient. 3B, Sharing Responsibility, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community, proficient. Communication engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance, proficient. 3D, Family Concerns, addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner, proficient. And the overall rating for Standard Three is also proficient. That brings us down to our fourth area, which is the Superintendent's Performance Rating for Standard Four, Professional Culture. Commitment to High Standards fosters a shared commitment to high standards of service, teaching, and learning with high expectations for achievement for all, proficient. Cultural Proficiency ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected, proficient. Communication demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills, proficient. Continuous Learning develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices, and theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his or her own practice, proficient. Shared Vision successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor, proficient. Managing Conflict employs strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict, and building consensus throughout a district or school community, proficient. And the overall rating for Standard Four is also proficient. So I apologize for reading through all of that, because I know we have it in front of us, but it is something that is important for the public to be able to hear and see that. And then I would turn our attention to the comments. Maybe we could start at the top, if people have areas that they would like to see edited.
It's very hard to edit in public.
I know. It is very sad.
It's not my practice.
It is not my practice as well, but it is very sadly the law, that we are required to do this out loud in public as a process.
But I custom, I guess they're accustomed to hearing repetitions. So it's okay that we say several times, this is her first year.
Yes.
Right, because are they mindful of the fact that there's five different people who wrote these comments? So is that how, I mean, it doesn't need to be like a cohesive set of ideas, right?
And on many school committees, there are more than five.
Right.
Yes, so, but so the other piece that's important is that all of our individual evaluations are part of the public record, and they are a piece of the evaluation itself, that it, it doesn't have to be, we don't have to go through every single piece, because we also could go through, if people have that appetite, we could go through all of them individually and merge that into one document as well.
But theoretically, we could just leave it as is, as each person's ideas.
So.
It doesn't need to be reworded.
It, I did reword some of it to make it flow better, because I took, I took the first-person pronouns out, because it was five different first people, and tried to make it flow in different areas. I also, most of them, I took pieces of what was written out, because it was very lengthy, and I was trying to capture the whole, but we could add things back in or kind of move from there.
What do other school committees do?
So they often just make, they make a summative statement, often, a summary statement of it, of how they feel. It is, there is not one way to do it.
I just wonder if the practice is just to include everything everybody's written?
I know, right? I mean, I'm happy to work on a more succinct way of saying it, if that's what folks want, but to me, I feel like you get to sort of see what each of the folks here, and it doesn't have our names next to it, and you might be able to figure it out, but still, I mean, it's, you know, I think it's fine the way.
Yeah, exactly.
I felt like the consolidated result of the five inputs represented the message that I, generally, that I thought we were presenting, I was presenting, so I, I think, I don't think all of the detail needs to be in here, because the individual ones are accessible to Dr. Kavanaugh and anyone who wants to see them. My, in general, I think that says enough. The only area where I felt a little, a little bit out of step with where I think the rating came out overall, and I don't, I didn't take the time, it came out kind of late today, so I didn't look at the individuals and average them or whatever. I happen to feel like Dr. Kavanaugh excels in the professional culture piece, and I felt like there were areas, like when I looked at exemplary, I thought, well, if I went to an MASC conference, could Dr. Kavanaugh lead a session on topic X? And I felt like in the areas of, particularly communication and managing conflict, personally, I felt like she was exemplary. So I think we've had some conflict this year. We've had an opportunity to observe how this has been handled, and I think, I don't know, I just felt like I wanted to recognize that. I can't imagine someone who would be a more effective communicator on that one, you know, that one, too. I couldn't imagine, between the H Cam videos, the written communications, the strategy workshop breakouts, and the reading materials and reference documents and whatnot to engage with the community, I just feel like the communication is on a level that is not, is above what is expected, personally. So I just, I would lobby for that. I am okay, I guess, with where the group ended up, but I would just say that I would, I could see myself sitting in an MASC conference and listening to Dr. Kavanaugh speak on communication techniques and conflict management, so.
And that, this is where we are able to kind of move things one way or the other. It doesn't have to end up being an average, that that's would be.
I guess for me, the challenge was the entire process. And the challenge of giving a holistic feedback, right? All of us have areas of growth, and how do we provide that kind of a feedback without it impacting and being received in a way that helps growth, right? That was my challenge with the process. So overall, I think Dr. Kavanaugh has extremely hardworking, she's extremely professional in how she conducts herself, the work that she has done. I felt that in each of her goals, she met all the goals that were set for her, and I felt with regard to the budget, she actually exceeded. So I think in terms of the combined evaluation on the goals, this is spot on with what I felt over her achievements. I think when it came to the budget, working with your team, you were able to advocate for what we need for our schools. You know, all the administrators came and presented, and you backed that up. It was not an easy process, but I felt it was extremely streamlined. This year, that stood out for me, really, the entire budget process being so streamlined, and knowing what to expect, how it all bent about, working with the town partners, you know, the back and forth that happened was smooth, I felt, and giving the community an opportunity to give feedback. And ultimately, being able to present it at the annual town meeting in a manner that was very well received. So not, and I think that was some feedback that you had received from the committee is not just the numbers, but some pictures and some stories. I think you did a fabulous job there. So I think on that front, this is fabulous. The only area that I would request for consideration is conflict resolution strategies. And I guess that's where there's a slight difference in the sense that I do think that Dr. Kavanaugh would do fabulous in making a presentation on anything, because she's so thorough in her research and all the data analysis that she does. I think she would do a fabulous job there. I have no doubt about that. I think there are a few areas which are more interpersonal that could be looked at, and perhaps some strategies to look at. That's my only feedback.
That's interesting. They were sort of opposite.
Yeah. That's right.
It is interesting.
We look at things through different lenses. And I guess that's why it averaged out, but I definitely felt that in each of the categories overall, she was absolutely proficient. And, you know, I read through every description of what proficient means in each of the categories. It's actually fantastic. So I want to say you did a fabulous job, and I hope you, I'm sure you'll keep it up, and look forward to the next year.
I really love the way that Dr. Kavanaugh has made herself available to anyone who wants to come and talk to her. And her ability to listen attentively and to respond intelligently and sensitively is a rare virtue. And so I know throughout the year, I mean, I find these forms just horrific, and I find this. this public evaluation just horrific too, because, I mean, I, I know my experience here, and I know my experience in going to visit her in her office and talking to her has always been a fruitful experience. She's always listened. I think, you know, we're all talking to each other still, we don't have scars and cuts on our faces, we haven't broken out into fights. I heard the budget presentation was received very well by everyone in town, I mean, everybody knew it inside and out, in a way, but I think you've done a great job, I think you've done a great job and an impossible job. I could never do it, I would never want to do it, no matter how many lives I live.
Well, don't drive her out of it, don't drive her away.
No, I'm not gonna drive her away, but that's why I thought, you know, we gotta see, gotta put proficient, because if we just line up exemplary, what does she have to shoot for? Right? In my doctoral dissertation, it's not like people said, "This is perfect stellar, A-plus work, Meg." No, you know, they have to set you a little bit of a goal. But I think you're right on line, and I think you do have our support, and I think your administration very much has our support and our respect and our, and our admiration.
I think that's true too, so thank you.
Yeah. It's all good stuff, we're moving forward.
All right, I'll say something, I guess, because everybody's looking at me like, there's anything else you want to say, Jen, but I, I mean, it's already all been said, I mean, I, and I've told you, I think that you, Dr. Kavanaugh does a great job, I think that the district was very fortunate that we were able to, with Kathy's retirement, have you just move right in and seamlessly just jump in and do your job, and your old job for a little while too, right? The two of them sort of overlapped for a while, so, you know, it is, it's been, it's been a, I'm sure, very challenging year for you, but you've done it seemingly so effortlessly from our perspective, we know the hard work that you put in, and I think that, same thing, to be evaluated in front of a camera with ten people in it is just such a weird, like, thick skin you must have in order to handle this situation, but.
Oh, she's heavily medicated.
So, it's definitely, you know, I would, there, there are so few areas that I think that you need to specifically work on, I think that as you keep continuing the job and you get more experience, and you sort of learn what the everyday things are that you really need to handle, and the, and the things that can sort of, the more, the bigger sort of emergency things that you need to handle, I think that, that, that comes with time. And in the first year, you've handled it extraordinarily well, so I think, you know, maybe there'll be a little less stress or something for you, and a little bit more like time at home with your family or something for you, as you, as you move forward in, in the next couple of years, so, I mean, you did a great job, we're lucky to have you.
Thank you. I would echo, we are lucky to have you. When I think back to when you assumed as the acting superintendent, it seems like so long ago in some ways, but you really did move in seamlessly, and really have taken us in a very positive direction, the schools are regarded very highly in the community, the comments after town meeting are remarkable, that people were so pleased with the presentation, and that you were able to negotiate with the town and work in a positive way, come out of all of the budget discussions in such a positive way, and have them acknowledge that we needed more than the standard three and a half percent right from the get-go. That was a huge, that made our process much easier to do. I would agree, I think you're an outstanding communicator, I think that is a strength that comes across in your written communication, in the way that you communicate in front of other boards, other groups that you go before. It really, it has been a phenomenal year of, I think, growth for the schools, and managing sometimes often tricky situations that people aren't even always aware of behind the scenes, that you, you wear a lot of hats and deal with a lot of delicate things with grace and strength, so.
Thank you.
I'd say that's, it, in, in terms of the written piece, are there things that, I'm sorry to keep hearing back.
Let's bring it back.
I, I'm sorry to bring it back, I love comments, because I actually, I would think that's probably in many ways more valuable, is hearing the unstructured comments that are not kind of put into a box, but are there, I know that the one thing that you had said, Amanda, was moving, now I've lost, and it's letter four C.
Communication and the bridge conflict, yeah.
Letter four C to slide that from proficient to exemplary.
I would support that too, if you, if you, you know, if you're willing to do that. I, I agree, I think that and your data analysis skills are also fairly exemplary.
That, that was something that was evident from, I think, the time you became the assistant superintendent, early on, that your data-driven results were, well.
A little wacky that way, yeah.
In a good way, we, we do very well with that. In that, I know as part of what made your budget presentation so successful was integrating data from many different places in a way that actually those of us who are not data people can understand.
Jen, which one is that?
Are you, are you looking at the, the communication one?
Sorry, the data one.
It might have been professional, and professional culture, maybe? Or it could have been in the communication one, too, I can't remember.
So are we, are we, do we have a consensus here? I also was in agreement on moving the communication one.
I mean, it's sort of a, it, I mean, in a way, the overall for that category is proficient, it's kind of a small point, but I'm not sure what I could possibly ask of Dr. Kavanaugh in communication that would make it better, honestly, so. That's kind of where I was coming from, but maybe we don't all agree, I'm not sure.
Any others before I?
Data-informed decision-making, it's one, standard one E, is that the one I was thinking?
It's funny, because we, I think almost all of us commented on that in our comments, so I'm not sure if our, maybe our rankings were proficient, but our comments all highlighted that, so maybe.
You're, you're right, but there, there felt like this pressure of, like, it's kind of like, I think of when the kids' report cards come back, you know, like, I, I think of, go back to some of the standards that, like, you've, when you look at what the teacher's written, it feels like your kid was a four, not that, not comparing your child at all, I apologize for that, but I think you're right, in some cases, what we felt did not get captured in.
The rating.
The rating.
Yeah.
So I, I would be.
I'd support moving one E to exemplary as well, and I, and like you said, it doesn't change the overall, but I think that just to show areas where you're really particularly rock star is not such a bad thing.
So four C and one E. Do we have, how do we do that? Do we have to take a vote? Do we just?
So we're gonna vote on the end, so I think what we're looking for now is a consensus, so that people, anybody who objects, I think that would be a good time to, like, on any of these motions, and, not motions, but on any of these things that we're, edits that we're tossing out, I think it's important to have everybody's voice heard. Other specific edits, either to the ratings or to the comments?
To Mina's point, I mean, I had also put in, I don't know, growth area, the sort of additional thoughts, but I, I'm okay with this being a summary, and the additional thoughts being, you know, something we could talk about offline. It's, I still think this captured it, but I.
I did not leave them out intent, like, to, to cut, because I didn't think they were important at all.
I fully recognize that, and, and I think that my additional thoughts had baked in there some, you know, where do we go from here, sort of growth and next steps kind of comments, and I'm okay with this, the way it stands for the review, but I, you know, I think, I don't, I didn't read everybody's in detail and put it, commit it to memory, but I think a number of us has some thoughts on, like, growth areas or next steps, or, and I don't know what the norm is for that. It's gonna get quite lengthy if we put all that in.
I mean, my personal take is that Dr. Kavanaugh has been a very strong leader, and she has been able to bring together all the work that has been going on very well. And in that regard, I see her as proficient, and I think that next year, I'm hoping to see plenty of exemplary. I am certain that is going to happen. So, from the comment perspective, I had certainly shared some areas, which I just shared, and I think those are things you will continue to work on, and in your success, like the student's success and our success, and that's why we are here. And so the feedback, I totally want you to take it in a holistic manner, and not look at it as a criticism at all in any even smallest area that we have given, these are small things, which are so easy for you with all that you have done, you, you put in a lot of work. You know, you've been working tirelessly, I've seen in every single area, you know, whether it is safety, student safety, I had made a note of that, you worked with the SRO and the police chief and the fire chief, and everybody, you've been working out in the community, and you've been out there, and you shared the strategic approach with the community communications group where folks would otherwise not have gotten that chance. So I see all of that, and like I said, proficient is a very fabulous rating to begin with, and I hope to see exemplary next year.
And you deal with us.
It's cultural too, isn't it, this whole rating system, and, you know, America is a culture of excessive praise, and if you don't excessively praise someone, somehow it means you damn them, but that's not the truth, you know? It, it's not, and I think what I like about the, the richness of all five reports is there are five strong points of view altogether. Doesn't hurt anyone to have those things there.
It does not.
She's done a great job. I mean, who even reads this, really?
Well, hopefully she does.
Well, she's read it once, but there you go, you know, it's like a report card you shove in the top drawer of the desk, and you don't look at it again, because we're so busy with day-to-day actions.
But I think it is telling, I mean, for the community, for the two people who might be watching at home, or for someone who might watch on video later, I think it is important to also remember that we are five individuals, and we don't necessarily make life easy for Dr. Kavanaugh, and even every other stakeholder in the district.
No, in any way.
We are constantly pushing and probing and vetting, we're a checks and balances kind of an organization, and we are fortunate to have a leader who is open to that. And I think we, we have done a good job, the five of us, you know, but in some of what we've done, and I think that's helped as a team, all of us come together and produce, you know, better output, but I do think it's a reality that Dr. Kavanaugh has a hear from five of us individually, and we all have priorities, and we all have well-reasoned things that are very important to us, and I think you've shown tremendous patience and also openness to hearing what is important to us. We all represent different parts of the community, and I think the community likes that we are here for them, and I think that we are lucky that you listen, and you discuss things with us, and we can, you know, shake out ideas, and a lot of it happens off-camera, but, you know, it all comes together into positive output, so I think it's, we're lucky to have you. A different superintendent might not value our individual inputs quite as much, it's hard, it's hard to hear from us all the time.
All the time, in, in different, like you said, different things that are important to each of us.
Yeah.
And I think she hears from us in the moments where a particular issue might be critical, and that's the moment of learning, it's not at the end of the year when we write this little fluffy evaluation.
Right.
Sorry, I called it fluffy, but it is.
And sometimes by issues that are critical, I think there are issues that we are, some of us are more passionate than others on, and.
Do you say, Mina, do you think?
Hot-button things that get, I'll, I'll just speak for myself, and that might not always be easy to deal with that much passion on different things.
Yeah.
Is there a motion that anybody would like to make with regard to the evaluation?
Let's conclude it, it looks great, bravo.
Where do we end up with the edits?
The what?
The edits, where do we end up with those?
So I made the, the edits, so that's the, the, now I forget what letters they were.
Four E, one E rather, one E and four C.
I did not hear any dissent on those, so I shifted those over to, from proficient to exemplary. So is there a motion to accept this as written, or as amended, I guess, well, it's written that way now, because I edited it in real time?
Moved.
Motion by Meg?
Second.
Second by Mina, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we have now concluded our first round of evaluations, congratulations to all of us for getting through this process.
I'm not sure we did that textbook, but that's okay.
I want to thank all of you, and I want to take a minute to thank my entire team, so I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Jen Parsons, and the Director of Finance and Operations, Mrs. Rothermick, Kim Polnick, Director of HR, Ashok Ghosh, Director of Technology, Karen Zaleski, Director of Student Services, and Tim Person, Director of Building and Grounds. I want to thank DeKeen, the Athletic Director, our five amazing building principals, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Keller, Mrs. Carver, Mrs. Spalallo, and Mrs. DeBeau, and all of the assistant principals, and I hope I have not forgotten a single soul in that list, because they are all very important to this organization and very important to children, so.
And at the end of the day, that, that your team is tremendous.
Tremendous, I am very blessed to have them, yes.
Thank you.
Super here.
Thank you. All right, that then moves us into our next opportunity for public comment, unless there are people behind the chairs, I think we're okay with that, so we will go into items by consensus.
Okay, so as superintendent, I recommend the school committee ex-approve the items by consensus as outlined in your agenda.
Motion.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Meg, second by Mina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then I, unanimous, so passes, and then at this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Motion by Meg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mina, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, we are adjourned at nine fourteen PM, and our next meeting is on June sixth, two thousand nineteen, right here in the high school library at seven PM. Thank you all, and have a good night.